I'm sorry, I should have. I'm sorry.
So we can just, we called the meeting to order at 7:03. Members of the Conservation Commission were noted. And now we're taking roll call for the, or just noting the members of the Parks and Natural Resources Committee that were present. Sorry, this recording gets me every time.
Sorry, if you remember that.
And also with us from the Parks and Natural Resources is Vicki Weatherall.
Not Diana.
You're muted, you're muted, Vicki. I don't know if you were saying something.
I was able to rename Vicki on my end.
Okay.
I missed screen name Charlotte. Charlotte, could I get?
Charlotte Pye.
P Y, and I'm going to rename her too.
Wonderful. Thank you. I've got it. I also received a text from Will We Met. He is, wifi is down. He's trying to get back as quick as he can to attend the meeting.
Okay, thanks Chad. Okay. So if we could look at our minutes, Conservation Commission members from our last, oh, we don't have minutes here to.
Yeah, I did not include minutes because this is a special meeting really just to look at one item. And you will be having a meeting towards the end of the month, and I thought you could approve both those.
Sure. Sounds good. Yeah, so let's move on to the item 3A, which is our new business, the impact, environmental impact evaluation for Mansfield Apartments redevelopment project at UConn. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review it. It's, it's a pretty large document. I've tried to work through it as quickly as possible. I also made a mistake in an earlier email to some of you that my employer worked on this. I'm out of this discussion. I was confusing this with the EIE for the Swan Lake, that Swan Lake EIE. So I, I can, I can be a part of this conversation. So I'm sorry for that confusion. So I don't know how we want to start this.
I should all, Jim. Okay. My, I should, I should remind people, as most people know, I live about 1,000 feet down Hank's Hill from 195. That puts me probably, my land probably 1,000 feet from this project.
Okay. Hello, Miranda.
I'll also note that I work for UConn. Though participating today as a resident of Mansfield, a member of the Conservation Commission.
And James as well. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I see Miranda Davis from Parks and Natural Resources has joined us.
She is also Miranda Davis of the Conservation Commission. So we get, it's a double dip. She's great.
She's got two hats.
And Miranda, you also work for UConn as well.
I do. I work for UConn as well. So should disclose that.
And Tom, are you saying that you also work for UConn?
I believe.
Slightly.
Are you, but you are as an adjunct or I'm not sure what your role is, Tom. Maybe you could just.
I'm an adjunct. And I'm involved in five separate things besides Skinning Club. So, and I work with Miranda quite a bit.
Okay.
Okay. So it's a, it's a, as I was saying, it's a very large document. There's probably a lot of ways to start this. I don't know if we will, Jen, do you have any suggestions about how to sort of deconstruct it for comments or if people have comments that they've prepared?
Yes, so you have already, each, the, both Parks, Natural Resources and Conservation Commission looked at this extensively last spring during the scoping process. And so many of your comments may still be germane. And what sometimes committees do is they kind of go through those, those comments. And the letter dated March 22nd, 2022 from Linda to UConn kind of highlights a lot of those issues. So one way to do that would be to, and I did include that letter in your packet, is to kind of look at the, look at the items in that letter. And then say if you'd like to reiterate them or if they, you feel like they've been sufficiently addressed. I mean, that might be one of the better, more concise ways. I also, in her letter, attached, attached to her letter are the Conservation Commission minutes as well as Parks and Natural Resources Commission.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
On, I think it's PDF page 165. There's a tabulation of their supposed responsiveness to those comments.
Yeah, okay. So actually I can pull those up and maybe share my screen. Did you say it was 165?
I think so. Let me get back to it.
Oops.
Yeah, 162 is where it starts.
My computer's really slow tonight. Okay. Okay, can folks see the comments? Okay. All right. Do you want to start at the beginning there? Because PCC and you did, a lot of them are about traffic. So.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try to.
Yep.
Maybe review this set of them and quickly see if there's any comments and then move on to the next one and just kind of work our way through.
Yep.
So let's take a minute or two to just review these folks. And then if anybody has comments, we can.
So the first page really deals with traffic. And I'm not sure if you want to weigh in to those, on those comments. But we do have the Traffic Authority and Derek July, the Assistant Town Engineer, who really, that's one of his major areas of expertise that, and he's weighing in on that. So I'm not sure if you want to continue to.
But do, do we have a sense of what the town's response might be to this response yet? Or, I mean, one thing I get concerned about is when they say an increase from 270 to 900 beds is not going to have any effect on traffic. I just don't see how that's possible. So if we, if we have comments to that effect, I don't need to.
Right. And I think, I think that, I think those comments, similar comments will be relayed to UConn. I think there's concern about how the, the ingress and egress and then all of the number of curb cuts. How we talked today at the Traffic Authority Committee meeting about crash data that they've used, that they just use crash data from the past three years. And those apartments really have been vacant for the past three years. So bringing that to their attention. And then mainly it's the curb cuts, getting the people from the 900 people from these Mansfield Apartments over to the UConn campus and how we're going to do that safely.
So I would like to add, I would like to add here that the comments are only about movement between the apartments and the campus. There is nothing about movement between the apartments and the commercial area. The supermarket, the restaurants, the post office, there is nothing in the EIE that addresses that issue.
Good. The other thing is on the past three years, for various reasons we're all too familiar with, traffic counts were down to the extent that insurance companies were rebating people pre meal. So those are probably totally invalid time period between the emptiness of the apartment complex and what we know for traffic in general.
And is the parking garage, the parking garage is for more than just the proposed residence at this location. Is that right? I haven't.
That's unclear. I mean, they're going to have to have some sort of guest parking, but I would think it would be mainly for, it's not going to be, I don't believe, I don't know. I'm not sure, actually.
We can include that as a clarification. We'd, we'd like them to clarify if the parking garage is intended for only residents at this redevelopment or for other people accessing the main campus. Because I, just in terms of traffic and the busing, the current busing issue coming out of that area, it creates some problems at the the South Eagleville Stores Road intersection. And so I just, as long as the traffic study is, is attentive to all these concerns and especially what Vicki just said, if they're not, if the comments are about the internal movement, that, that really doesn't help us when we get out onto the public roads.
And also they did state in the EIE that this apartment would not have any serious impact on increased pedestrian traffic at that intersection.
Yeah.
And its impact on the traffic being backed up for the walk lights. I mean, I just remember from my own experience, and Jim probably can talk about this better than I can. When there were 300 people living there, it was an issue because the pedestrian light was hit often and the traffic would back up. And now we're talking about three times as many people living there. That again, I mean, that statement that there would be no impact on the traffic from pedestrians at that intersection is frankly, not real. It's, it's not reality.
And, and they're, they're using, they're using comments about having high pedestrian traffic to justify that there aren't as many cars going to be traveling. Because people will walk to campus. They, they make the disingenuous claim that these are only five minute walk from campus. Whereas what they failed to recognize is, is that's the arts complex and the STEM complex is on the other side of campus. Much more than a five minute walk.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard not to comment on the transportation, I guess, because.
Yeah, well, I think that's one of the major things. Yeah.
Right. One of the things I'd like to give them, give them some credit. They did try to suggest that the student living and the schedules of students are slightly different than what engineers usually use to design. But they really didn't try to actually get to what is a real number from a student complex. They mentioned there were some counts from Knollwood as a, as a, as a similar residential thing. But I don't, didn't see that really included anywhere in the final analysis.
That's a comment that Derek had made as well. And whether or not that's even comparative. It's a kind of a different type of, it's not nearly as intensive a development.
And it's not all students either. It's not all students.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say Knollwood has a lot of people working elsewhere than classes on campus.
One of the things I'd like to see the university tell us is what's the ratio of cars to students in the general university population? Is it really only one car for every two students?
No idea.
Because they're, they're saying that, well, it will, will make arrangements elsewhere. And I'm sure they will tell the people that they're going to park in Dubulot and they will abide by that decision.
Right. I mean, whatever happens, I mean, I think it's, we have to be honest about the fact that there is going to be only, you know, it's going to be like permitted parking at the town hall now. I mean, like, and barely, we all have parking tags, but there's going to have to be some sort of like community center membership tag. And we're going to have to, we're, the own, we're going to have to make sure that we're enforcing our own parking, because already people are abusing that.
Well, maybe that's a good revenue source for the town is, is illegal parking at the community center.
Exactly.
One car per two students who are in the residence hall actually does not sound too far off from me, but this is going to be different. These, this is going to be something that encourages students who are less likely to not own a car, just given the location and things. So I don't, I'm not sure that will hold, is my point.
And, and I think the thing is, is the conventional wisdom is that two people in an apartment complex or a married couple, and they may be sharing one car. But that's not the case with, with the students because it's generally not.
Is there a, in, in any kind of transportation or traffic study, is there, is there a section about any, any public transit that they're, you know, kind of a more robust expansion of their transits at campus?
Um, I, well, they, the bus will go through there. And we can ask that question.
They kind of wave their hands at increasing the schedule.
Yeah.
But it's really just a hand wave.
Yeah, it's, that, that doesn't feel very convincing, I guess, if all, all these things lining up that, oh, with, you know, pedestrian impact, pedestrian traffic won't really change or vehicle traffic won't really change. And the transportation system won't really change, but you'll have three times as many people. So there's going to be, it's going to be a noticeable change. It seems like they could increase their, their, their bus routes or better design the site to have, you know, multiple non-vehicle transportation for students, you know, from the, from the new housing up to campus.
One thing I want to point out is in at least two of the maps, they do show Bolton Road coming out opposite the Western access road to this development.
Yes, so that is, they, I was, I learned that they included that because it was on the campus map, in the campus master plan. They don't have any current plans to build Bolton Road, but just in case they do, they are trying to align that driveway with what would be Bolton Road.
What is Bolton Road?
Bolton Road is a new road that they've been talking about for a while that would parallel Eastwood Road. So it would kind of go around the community center and then come out on South Eagleville.
Do they own the, they own that section of woods between?
Yes.
Eastwood and MCC? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I think it's actually a corridor that we find quite a bit of wildlife in sometimes.
Yeah.
We get a lot of mammals going through there. It's one of the corridors across campus when we do our camera studies in there.
You'll get more mammals eventually. Homo sapiens.
We all, already do.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I think, I think we're on to the next page here, Jen. Is that right?
Yeah, so that was the access point. So are we ready? So Chad, tell us what you might need from, from the group, because this is a lot of information.
So I've noted, oh, my document disappeared. So there I found it again. So I've noted a couple of concerns regarding traffic. Both vehicular and pedestrian, its impacts to intersection of 275 and 195 into stores downtown. Question about ratio of cars to students. Concern about parking at the town hall and community center will not, they'll see increased pressure and, and not with their intended use for EG, for those buildings only. And noted that Bolton Road is showing us connecting to 275 roughly paralleling Eastwood. But I'm not sure if there's a concern about that or if it's just noted.
Well, they, they do address it in the bottom comment on that page. It would have its own scoping and traffic analysis.
Yeah.
And just, sorry, just Chad, if we can note that Will We Met has joined the meeting? Sorry, go ahead, Meg.
I wanted to just, well, nobody really needs reminding, but I wanted to say that I think that, that, that what ought to also be considered is the kind of volume of vehicular traffic we already have going through downtown, which is clogged. And trying to turn left or right onto South Eagleville from any of those side streets like Eastwood and Westwood and, and the rest is, is, is a nightmare. I mean, it really is. It's already difficult now. And I can't even imagine what, what an extra, what's 630 people will be doing when they take the shortcuts, you know, to campus and just the sheer volume. I mean, as it is, we've got a downtown that's narrow enough that buses have trouble turning corners. Or will we have more buses? I mean, I just think it's, it's an awful lot of population concentration in an area that's fairly fragile traffic perspective wise. It's stretched thin already.
Yeah.
I actually really dislike the idea of losing that corridor or having it cut into.
That's, it would be awful. It's like chipping away at all the little blocks.
It's the green space on campus and that one, we get a lot going through there, a lot of mammalian wildlife.
Well, that's, that will be subject, we'll, we'll need to talk to, that will be kind of a separate and distinct review if, if there is the Bolton Road extension, which I can't imagine that that won't be coming fairly soon, but there, I, there's no plan in that I've heard about that they will be building that road yet.
I think it's more of when than an if.
Okay. So Chad, do you, just to go back to your list, we feel like you've got those comments regarding traffic and congestion for the, for the project, not so much for Bolton, but for the project.
For the EIE. Yes, I think so.
Okay.
I, I do think that some emphasis should be put on the point that the traffic data collection was done during a time of campus abandonment.
They, they did it last year.
Did they?
Yeah.
When the campus was fully back?
Right, yes. However, the Mansfield Apartments was not. That was vacated, that was vacant at the time, or maybe just used for quarantine housing.
Did they do it as, in the school calendar year or did they do it in the summer?
Um.
They did it in April.
Yeah, and I talked with the guy who was doing, you know, they have to look at other, you know, approved projects. So they did have to take into account Eagleville Green. See, I'm looking at that. They, they took, they, they just look, if you look at the EIE on page, if, on the PDF of the EIE, page 77, they look at other area developments and projects. So, and that is included Eagleville Green, signalized intersection at the, at Route 75, 275 and Separatist Road, which I think is in the works right now. Potential redevelopment of the municipal complex in town hall, which is something in our facilities plan that I don't think that will happen anytime soon, but it's something that the town, that has been a recommendation of the town's facility study. And then there are some road improvements that we, we've received a grant, the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant to assist with the development of Eagleville Green and then to also do some road safety improvements to increase the sidewalk and to do some median islands to kind of slow traffic. So they, they did look at that.
I'm not placing Eagleville Green where, where.
I can't either, I confess.
So Eagleville Green is a, a project that you all looked at. It, it is an affordable housing. It was mixed income, but the majority of the units will be affordable to people to low, basically low income or below, or however it had described, defines that. So, and that is approved. And they're consolidating the financing now and it, they, they're hoping to break ground within a year.
So that's, that's the Maple Road.
It's not Maple Road. It's, it's, it's on, all on South Eagleville Road, yeah.
But, but near, near that.
Corner of Maple Road.
Just trying to.
Yes, it, yes, but there's no frontage on Maple Road, yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Is it helpful for me to share the screen or?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
But I'm not, are we, are we in the right place? It's.
So you're at 163.
Okay. So this is, looks like again, like traffic, more pedestrian and traffic circulation concerns. He's, the second to last row says the 2020 water supply plan. This flow may be inadequate for. Okay. That is an interesting point. I mean, we're, we're talking about tripling the population of that location. Something that's always on my mind is just sort of the, the use of the Fenton River well field for campus drinking water. And so this is going to, this is going to increase their consumption. And I know they have a lot of water conservation measures and this building will be lead gold potentially. But I I don't know what, I don't know what, there, there doesn't seem to be a backup other than using the Fenton well field as much as possible. And then going over to the Willie well field with, and they, they don't seem to be using the Connecticut Water Company interconnection to sort of buffer the use of the well field. So.
They, well, they have certain parameters with, which they have to comply with, but they're going to use their wells first. Because they have to pay for the water from the Connecticut, from Connecticut Water Company. So they're.
I understand that, but I don't think that was ever clear in their interconnection proposal that they were going to connect, but still not back off on, I mean, I get it's free water, but.
Yeah, I think, but I think they have parameters when it turns, I can get a clear answer from Stan Nolan, but there are clear parameters and guidelines for when they go to Connecticut Water. It didn't, just because they were connecting to Connecticut Water didn't mean that they were going to not use their wells, is my understanding. It was that.
Yeah, Jennifer, I can answer this question, you know, from the Willamette River Alliance, because we went through all of this.
Yeah.
With them when the Fenton River was dried up and they then began to decide they were going to have to find another source of water. And there are gauges on both the Fenton River and the Willamette River. And when those gauges descend to a certain level, that's it. Those wells are turned off until the levels come back up again. And at that time, you know, if, usually the Fenton is the one that goes first. And then when the Willie River goes, then they use the water from the Chenipsett reservoir. So it's, it's pretty, pretty well managed, you know, and that, that was our feeling that they had figured out what to do.
Is that? Is that, is there? Uh, action on any of those? Taking water from and switching over to the Willie or switching over to Shenepset. Do they do they publicly record that and provide that on a website or anything? Like, that's been my frustration is that they will. They will say, oh, well, we switched over three weeks ago.
Right.
We went through that this summer.
My feeling is that Connecticut Deep keeps in touch with all of this. Because it was such an issue in the past. Um, but I think that would be an interesting question to to get an answer to.
I wouldn't be surprised. Public health is involved there too, because Shenepset is surface water. With all that implies and the well water at least is slightly filtered out of those two marvelous aquifers.
Michael, if you send me an email with your questions, I can sport them onto Stan Nolan and try to get an answer. Of like when they're actually, what is the, I think the the question is, is at what level at?
Yeah.
What does that gauge have to read before you shut everything down? And and how is that recorded and how do you keep track of that and who who can find out that information?
Okay.
Okay, you can. The gauges themselves are online. So I mean, we watched the gauge on the Willimantic River many times. That that information is online.
But do you know what the what the cutoff is for?
I I do, but I don't know if the general public would know what that is.
And I know they've they've emailed the town when they've. Turned off the Fenton well field, for example, when it gets below three CFS. I don't want to digress too much here, but it usually comes at our prompting them about what's going on and they'll say, well, yeah, we just did it or we're doing it tomorrow or we did it three weeks ago. And so it to have a more. A better process where when they do it, they would alert the town. Um, so we don't have to continue to watch the the gauges to, you know, for a three.
If you put that in an email, Michael, I can see what I can do to make sure that 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 they. They formalize a some sort of communication, because I think they'd be happy to do that. It just has to be very clear of what what we're asking. And if you can make that clear and then I can try to work with them. And if it's not clear, then we can go back and try to make it clear. But I think we don't. Yeah, I I I've spoken with Katie and Katie Mulardo and Stan about this, and I think they're willing to. Let us know, but they want to know specifically what we want to know.
Sure. Okay, I'll try to be as concrete as possible. Uh, so sorry, not to get off on that too much when we're trying to get into this EIE. Number eight. So that's about an increase in impervious cover. Um, and stormwater generated, I think I if I remember from the earlier section of the EIE was an increase of like two acres and impervious surface for the site. So that gets to some things that Miranda was saying about across the street near the Bolton proposal, but you know, with the Vernal Pool, that's about two hundred feet behind the site and then. Extensive wetlands and an intermittent water course. Um, you know, and then a, you know, a a public sanctuary, there's definitely concern that they. You know, appropriately design the stormwater management system. And one thing I would say is that this has come up at my job is that the 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 precipitation data being used in stormwater. Modeling is from decades ago and that Connecticut Massachusetts is pushing to have a more of a projected precipitation. Uh, are using projected precipitation rates in their modeling, but. Just, just to just to acknowledge that the data that they'll use to show that it's adequately handling stormwater is is based on. The fifty or hundred year storm that was calculated like in the eighties. So today's fifty year storm is is.
Well, I Mansfield uses the NOAA Atlas for two thousand fourteen, so that we updated our stormwater, so that's but.
But they're not subject to Mansfield regs, right?
No, and I don't know what that could be a question as to what, you know, what rainfall data are you using?
Well, and I this Ken, I'm gonna weigh in here. I think they're they indicate in the EIS that they're gonna follow. Deep stormwater management protocols. And. I don't think. I think we get a lot of pushback if we push them to do something that's more advanced than that.
Yeah.
Because they'll say that's deep is good enough with that. And I I think the concern about the fact that today's fifty year storm. Will be the mid-century twenty-five year storm is a valid concern. And a forward-looking research class one university ought to look at that kind of thing in addition to what the current regulations are.
I I think Ken's last part is is maybe something, I mean, not to be passive aggressive or something, but. But it's a good point for a for a site that's going to be lead gold at an R one university. These are the kinds of progressive. Elements that are expected. But I do think the two thousand two. While that now. Anyway, I I do think they're using data that's a few decades, because we just went through a. A rewrite of some guidance documents, and I know the the push to get a more modern dataset or even future. Projected precipitation was was not the preferred choice for from from the state, I mean.
Well, it costs more.
Well, yeah. Okay, so number or anything else on the the?
I had a couple of thoughts. My I made my comments further down. But what they they do say they'll follow the Connecticut Stormwater Manual, but their language only ever talks about peak discharge attenuation. But the manual talks about the volume of water as well, not just the peak. Um, and everything that they're proposing to put in place sounds a lot like infrastructure that you use for peak reduction, not volume. Um, so it it seemed like they were using slightly clever language to get around something there. And then the second was they they talk about LID as low impact development as part of the stormwater control. Uh, and they they talk about maintenance of the stormwater detention basins, but they leave out maintenance of the LID, which is a huge part of that. Those things will clog up in a year or two and stop working. Um, so I was looking for a little more detail on that.
Thanks, James. That's that's good.
Good information.
Good observation. So we we might come back around to stormwater again when we get more into. You know, just talking about Moss Sanctuary and, you know, the. I don't recall, I think there was a concept where stormwater was being. Was eventually being put out in that direction, so maybe it'll come up again later. So number nine is. About our P O C D.
And they basically told us to pound sand.
Yeah, I. I I think this EIE is frankly. Invalid, because it does not address the issue of buildings that are five or seven stories high. In terms of the impact, I mean, they say make statements like there's no impact on the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And I'm like, what do you mean? You know, and nowhere in the AID does it state how many stories are being proposed. There is no number. Therefore, the EIE is not based on a number, a height of the buildings. And the impact on the sanctuary, the impact on the aesthetics of the area. I to me, that's just a huge hole. And to have Yukon say, well, basically, we can do anything we want to, does not answer that issue. It does not say, okay, what is the impact of having a five-story building in this area? It doesn't answer that. So to me, the EIE is missing this entire piece of information and the impacts of it.
They don't even have to provide like a set of plans on what they are gonna build. Am I am I correct on that?
They hardly did. It was just a schematic. It was very hard to kind of figure that out.
We we had this come up with another EIE that we reviewed and we we didn't even have a set of plan. I mean, that's something we're all familiar with, right? We get to review a set of plans to. To understand the site and, you know, details just exactly what Vicki's talking about. It's really. It's it's hard to feel like we can have a. A comprehensive, you know, review and comment without having even even conceptual plans about. The rough layout and the size of these buildings and, you know, access points in and out and.
I'm not sure how many of you also saw the out parcel E on the map on this, on the existing conditions map. Did you? Yeah, so that's that's not part of that and that they have an option to sell that. Uh, with there, so that will be redeveloped as well.
Well, actually, they they talk about gifting somewhere in the in the. Summary, they talk about seeding it to the town.
I I think by the by the seeding it, they mean that it will come under our local. Regular regulations and we'll be able to regulate it, but I don't, I've not heard of any. That they are going to be giving it to the town.
Oh, I thought they were gonna, because it's where the pump station is.
Nope.
And that pump station has a twenty-eight-year-old tank at it.
Yeah, no, I've, because I've, yeah, that it's pretty. Pretty sure that's gonna be sold.
Are there stipulations on on Yukon selling land to? For development? Or?
No, they can sell it to the comptroller to build his house overlooking Grexy's pasture.
Okay.
It's just something to key, I don't I don't want to get. Yes, when you're looking at this plan, you should make sure that you're not, you you're. You are thinking that this corner could, there's, you know, it's it's possible that that could be developed.
Well, I I inferred that it was gonna go to the town.
No.
And I can't see how, if they're gonna sell that parcel. They're gonna be, they're gonna have to have really good arrangements to maintain that pump station. Or the whole sewage system for the complex is gonna back up.
Or well, are they going to redo the pump station at a slightly different location?
Nothing is said about that.
Yeah. It's not only the complex, it's EO Smith and the town office building and quite a few other things, I would think, based on the slope of the ground.
Mm hmm. Uh, getting getting back to Vicki's comment. Uh, page forty-five of the text of the EIS, which is page sixty-five of the PDF. Talks about impact evaluation of the visual and aesthetic character.
Yes.
And it only speaks to the map view. It doesn't speak to heights.
No, there's no, there's nothing about.
And that is, that is, I think of of, as Vicki points out, that's a very fatal flaw. Um, as and I would think that a proper EIS would would compare. Computer-generated images of what they're proposing. With the existing condition and show the difference. And then try with a straight face to say it's not significant.
Right.
Ken, what page was that in the PDF paging?
Uh, PDF is sixty-five.
Why sixty-five? Right, yeah. Yes, there's a statement there that adverse impacts. To the existing visual and aesthetic character of the area are unlikely. The new facility would be designed to complement the surrounding environment, including residential and recreational land uses. As far as I'm concerned, that is a completely empty statement. It has no meaning at all.
Yeah. And we we do have some clear language in our zoning or Jen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we we created some zoning between. Uh, less compact areas and the compact areas. So that there was sort of a scaling up where so you wouldn't go from a a very rural, you know, low height. Spread out set of zoning to all of a sudden a very, you know, a five, six-story building. Where it's compact residential, that there was there was a middle zone to kind of appropriately scale buildings up that was that was an aesthetic.
But we don't have that in our zoning. We have that future land use map and that, if you guys remember the mixed use center transitional zone. That that's that has just been written, but can only be applied to certain areas as it's tied to the future language map. This on the future land use map is a compact residential transitional zone, I believe. I have that right here in the memo.
Well, that's the that's the love of. Uh, comment nine, we were just discussing.
Exactly.
They don't care.
It could, this is a. The area, it says this area serves as a transition from the heart of downtown stores to adjacent rural neighborhoods. As such, the scale and massing of buildings. Should be lower than four to five stories that that characterize the bulk of store center. So that is. That's part of the P O C D. And it is a should, not a shall, and it doesn't, and what what they're saying is that because this is Yukon land. There it doesn't apply.
That's fine, but they they do often state in here that they're consistent with Mansfield's P O C D, so just.
They're not yet.
Yeah, they're.
No, they don't. They state they're consistent with planning and zoning, not the P O C D. They ignore the P O C D.
Oh, I thought earlier in the in the summary, they made that comment, but okay. Well, Vicki, how would you like to to state that comment as as Chad writes it in our minutes? Or you've you've already stated it, I guess.
I think so, unless you want some clarification. I mean, I I just, I think basically. Without knowing the height of the building, it is not possible to evaluate. The aesthetic and visual impact and its compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, that was quite good. Thank you.
I hope someone got it on tape, because I don't think I could say it again.
Chad Chad's recording it. He's got a photographic ear.
Oh, great.
Just to clarify, um, to Michael, to your point about the P O C B. On page thirty-seven of the PDF. Under the local zoning and planning part. They the Yukon recognizes that they are not subject to the town zoning regs, but it does say the proposed action is consistent with future land use designations identified by the town in its P O C D.
Thanks, I'm not crazy. Thanks, Erin.
Page thirty-seven?
Yeah, the PDF, so.
Because elsewhere in the populations, they don't mention that.
Right, so I I think with with Vicki's comment, Chad, if you could include. A specific mention, is that section three two two?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the second sentence. So, yeah, I think it's important for us to. Highlight if they're going to claim that that they.
Of course, of course, reading, reading the rest of three point two two, the very last. Mansfield City Goal eight point one strategy, strategy, action, encourage Yukon to focus development, non-activities. In the core campus, north campus and depot campus. That's out national apartments is, you know. Outside what I consider to be core campus. But that's just my humble opinion.
That's, yeah, this core campus. Is north of EO, maybe? Or maybe they include the apartments as part of core campus.
I don't know, you know, that's my question. You know, I think of core campuses, that stuff clustered around the student union mall.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think that they're 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 not focused in that, they're focused on how to classify this parcel and they're classifying it because if it's past use as institutional. And then that that way they can avoid discussing a transitional zone, because if you know, transitional zone doesn't mean anything to them in terms of. How they're categorizing it as, hey, there's the downtown and then we have this institutional use. And then we'll we'll be okay, you know, with the Moss Sanctuary, but they're really not paying any attention to the residences in the area. In fact, the only. In fact, the only the only I think in the E I E only I'm talk about two residents briefly when they indicate. You know, one residence, a thousand feet, one somewhere else, um not that far away, but that's it. They don't really talk about neighborhood. They don't really talk about the rural character.
Yeah, that's also uh I think we're kind of in a similar vein on comment ten here where the the scale mass and density of the development is uh you know, not we're not able to kind of assess that potential impact on the on the sanctuary either.
Correct.
Because of a lack of detail.
Yeah, but what we're really saying here is that I think that what we're really saying is that is that the scale that's proposed to five to seven stories is really urbanization. You know, it it's not residences, not transitional, it's not even necessarily institutional, it's it's urbanization when you get to that size and scale.
Yeah, I mean, the store center is is five stories? I live right here. It's six. Maybe six with that extra. I mean, something of that scale over at that location seems uh it seems like way too much, just thinking about it right now. Um.
Well, it's smaller than a hockey arena.
Thanks, Ken. That's true. That's true. Okay, uh well, let's uh unless anybody else has another comment, we can go on to number eleven. I haven't read that yet, so. The proposed development has the potential to impact water quality of seeps and headwater streams on site adjacent to Moss Sanctuary, negative impacts on water quality in Tiff Pond as well as Fenton River. Um and then it continues a little more onto the next page. So, yeah, that's that's a I don't know if we need to restate that. That's a major concern, maybe just something to reiterate, but I don't know if it needs to be restated that there. I mean, everything about the design, the lighting, the leak offs from parking lots, the stormwater discharge, everything needs to be mindful of. You know.
And they do state that their design is gonna include that stuff. Um I think whether they do an adequate design or a Cadillac design is the question. Because after all, there's a vernal pool here that they should be willing to protect if with with a Cadillac design. If they were willing to buy an entire subdivision on the other side of campus to prevent it from impacting a vernal pool.
Yeah, I I feel like this is the same impossible uh review that Vicky just discussed. We we have we have nope, I can't I can't look at a stormwater discharge and be uh and and I mean, there's just nothing to look at. So we have nothing to look at to say. And we just, you know, this is this is kind of a an approval process without having anything to really look at.
Yeah.
But I think with the comment that referenced seeps in our in the meeting in which we discussed this, um John Salander is particularly um concerned about seeps and in their importance and how prevalent they are in Mansfield, but how they don't really appear in the wetland regulations. The deep regulations is not a wetland or a water course, according to the definition. But Mansfield is full of seeps and springs and we're on Spring Hill. You know, and that is a problem because if if it's not specifically called out in it in the deep guidelines. They don't really have to reference it, I don't think, in the in the E I E. I mean, you look at comment twelve here and it's just simply about wetlands and water courses, which neatly avoids ever having to deal with um springs and seeps. Even though they play a really important role here.
The other thing that's easy to miss, those clever hanks who built that dam to provide water for the silk mill. Built the top dam in eighteen forty two exactly high enough. If if they build it any higher, the drainage would also the extra water would be draining into the Willamantic Drainage. Study the top maps very closely in back there. You know, this is one thing I realized wandering around in that area.
I think that's Springfield.
Yeah, but there's mostly and the dam very seldom gets to full cool, of course.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh I regarding the wetlands in eleven and twelve, I I mean, their their response in twelve, I I don't think has much substance. It's just saying, well, we we hired somebody to delineate the site. That's that's what anybody does anywhere. So I think what what we could uh what we could encourage is that they do a more robust habitat assessment or um you know, even a a a survey for you know, unique rare species or I mean, just that all I mean, we know there's a vernal pool. Are they gonna do any kind of um pre and during and post construction monitoring of that? We we've been doing that for a project in Wellington, Connecticut where the the inland wetlands in Wellington um wanted us to create and then execute a pre construction and then a during construction and a post construction water quality and you know, biological monitoring plan. Um and I I they have a wetland scientist, but that that's really just to give them lines to put on a map, I think um. I don't know, some some way to some way to push them a little further.
I think you have to be explicit in 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 request the that the inventory springs and seeps. Means you have to be careful and do it seasonally, but it matters. And the more and more the Mansfield has developed outside of this. The the more um we're affecting these really important resources because they're just they're not looked at.
And I think.
They listed as critical habit headwaters. Uh there there's a I don't know what legal um standing that has, but there's a list of I maybe fourteen habitats that are um of interest in the state and I think headwaters is, and I don't know if that would include seeps.
It is not. I don't think it does. Seeps and springs.
Yeah, I I think you're right. They have to be called out specifically or they'll say it doesn't regulations don't compel us to do this.
Right, but so what I'm saying is that we we would be requesting that they recognize the town of Mansfield, seeing what Yukon is located. Has sort of special habitat, special, I should say, um soils or geomorphological, you know, attributes, which is why we have something called Spring Hill. And that's a really, they're really critical.
Well, I I think one one thing, I I like what you said, Michael, about uh what they're doing in Wellington. That's very intriguing. And you might, we could write, you could recommend something like that. But if you're looking at their plan, um and you know, they have sort of this very some some rectangles, polygons on a map, but they're not there there. It is a lot of redevelopment, the majority. But I I guess, so are you wanting them to evaluate that in the area, say, where they're putting the um parking garage or like, how can I think probably we need some more specificity because they're gonna say, well, this is a redevelopment. And what specifically do you want me to look at? Because you know what I mean? So let's so the more specific you can be, the better.
So I I guess I would say if if stormwater is going to be directed toward Moss Sanctuary, any discharge is going in that direction or a parking lot leak off. Then uh then we would like a uh uh a natural resources assessment that includes uh an understanding of the uh you know, the site hydrology, which is wetlands and water courses, the water quality of those resources and and if a in what 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 kind of monitoring program they would be comfortable with? And then we can respond if we're comfortable with what they propose.
That you won't have a back and forth though with them, just so you know. Um that's what we're just saying. Deep, I think deep is where O P M is gonna do something with that is how this works.
Sure, but if if they came up with a terrible monitoring program, we could still comment formally and say this is this looks pretty inadequate, I guess, but uh uh are you asking me to outline a monitoring program or?
No, I just say tell them specifically that you want a monitoring program.
Okay, yeah, that's. Yeah, we'd like a a monitoring program that begins before construction and continues to
Yes.
Five years after construction and includes uh you know, monitoring water quality of the the wetlands and uh uh wetlands and water courses or uh seeps, et cetera, that are adjacent to the site. Uh if if they're even if they're not discharging back there, I mean, there's a potential for unforeseen consequences, but it's specifically if they're gonna be having any stormwater go that way, it seems like we should be uh being uh uh ecological assessments of the vernal pool and then this broader water quality assessment of the uh the wetland systems adjacent to the site.
Yeah, I mean, on page fifty two, they're they're stating they're actually going to be improving water quality, so.
Every developer says that. Every developer says that. That it's gonna be better than what the forest could do before.
There's thing that has right now, they're saying there's untreated run up. They're not, they're gonna have they're gonna say that they have a more robust stormwater management system. So but yeah, no, I think we we did that for for the standard, if you remember that.
Um yeah.
But and we also would when wetlands approved um the J E Shepard property, um it was we we required the applicants to to do some baseline water quality analysis. Um so but we don't have a lot of information here, it seems to kind of really go into the details, but.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we yeah, we yeah, we just talked about one where we were saying we wanted water quality data as a baseline before the project started.
Yeah.
Something something like that would be uh would be good to start for the for the vernal pool specifically and then for the the other wetland resources back there. Okay, so item thirteen, the project falls under the jurisdiction of public safety, blah, 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 I don't I don't have any comment on that. Could we scroll down, Jen, to
Yeah.
At least to fourteen.
Their response to fourteen just doesn't even address the point. It does not at all. Right. Um in fact, um P N R C in our comments, which went, which were part of the E I E suggested that the E I should include an inventory of current conditions in the sanctuary, both natural resources, wetlands and the recreational use to establish a baseline and better understand and predict potential impacts of the proposed development. So that was not done. And it also said that the E I should identify actions needed to maintain a quality natural area experience and these actions should be considered part of the project cost. That was not done either.
Well, they say it's in their response to number ten.
Uh no. Sorry, no.
Well, we could make that clear that the the E I A did not include whatever.
Our request for for basically baseline information. So after these nine hundred people start stomping around in the sanctuary, we have some idea of the impact and have one hopes some redress.
Yeah, you know, the only thing they mentioned is the short term access limitation caused by the construction zone.
Right.
They don't really deal with the long term impact uh either of the traffic or of the noise on the sanctuary experience.
Right, exactly. The intention part is irrelevant.
Yeah, that doesn't matter. Yes, exactly.
Uh Chad, if we could uh uh make our the commission members, not just Chad, I I mean, and everybody to make a a comment to that effect that, you know, as uh that the request made by P N R C to include this baseline um assessment um was not included in the E I E and we're I would assume we're still asking for that, Vicky, or just make that point that we're still.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and the the pushback we're gonna get from them is that the project is limited to university property and is not intended to impose a negative impact.
Right.
Well, but it will.
Yes.
Yeah, I can say a lot of things aren't intended, you know.
Well, they're basically saying there's a big wall around Yukon and that's an effect town.
I think I think that's a great point. I mean, the it really puts a sense of urgency on having a a baseline uh a baseline report for the property before this goes forward and um.
Right, and and not not just for wetlands, but for the trails.
Yeah.
The condition of the dam, the condition of the pond, um you know, that's that's our concern.
Yeah, I think we could push them to do both, do sort of, you know, more uh ecological uh data collection for the wetlands and the vernal pool and also do kind of this stewardship baseline um for the pro for the whole property.
And they don't really address number seventeen either. They say it's noted for E I E and design development, but they really don't indicate that the face of the development towards Moss Sanctuary will not be the backyard, so to speak, the back, the back of the building. Uh because there are no design specifics.
Can we just back up for a second, Ken, before seventeen to number fifteen is about? Um it's imperative that Yukon conduct an E I E to ensure that the established restriction held by Karenetic Forest and Parks is not compromised. Um I do we know if they are going to do a survey to make sure that they are within the footprint or if they're staying within the existing developed footprint? It's it's safe to assume that they're not going to be working or or accidentally.
They have a survey and they very clearly know the property line. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The property line is actually back into the woods. Oh, I guess seventy five to a hundred feet, although I've never paced it.
Okay.
And I think I think that is their
Team, yeah.
Concept of a um not just a transition zone, but but that is going to be essentially what faces the sanctuary from this development is going to be this wooded buffer. I'm pretty sure that's their easy way out on that.
I wanna see a picture of the building I will see when I walk out of that bumper zone to on the trailhead.
Well, the trailhead will now be on the edge of the Moss Sanctuary. It will probably not be on Yukon property. Therefore, you will be walking into this wooded buffer. I mean, I I agree with you, Ken. I'm just anticipating what they will say.
But then I just I just don't want the last twenty or last fifty feet of my walk back to my car to be past dumpsters.
Well, we don't have a I mean, I it sounds like they're gonna keep that access road around the back, right? And
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said the ring road would basically get that boundary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but what's what? But I guess the thing is, is that the way they've got it kind of laid out is there's buildings on the ring road and buildings on one ninety five and a nicely continual to stay wooded area with paths in between. But it certainly looks like the back of those buildings facing the ring road is gonna be an awful lot of detention basins.
Yeah, I think lighting back there, the amount of traffic that they uh encouraged to use that ring road that's adjacent to the sanctuary, the lighting, the yeah, the all the other, you know, dumpsters and other facilities that they're gonna have to use this uh five hundred kilowatt generator. I mean, I mean, if if all those things are kind of put into less visible places from the frontage, it means they're gonna be pushed, you know, up against the sanctuary in some way.
Um and there's no details on how or where they will be uh placed on site. It's just not provided.
No, it's a so I, yeah, if we could put in our minutes, uh that there's a lack of detail understanding what what the. what the interface is between the, the redevelopment and, and the Moss Sanctuary.
I, I guess, and then I think, would you want to stress that you want it to be buffered and you want, like, we don't want to just be seeing loading and dumpsters and, and all, and, and those types of things when you walk out of the sanctuary? So screening the dumpsters, screening the loading areas, things like that.
I think, I think the, the PZ, the PO, see, the, the, our committee's comments basically said it should be treated like a front, not a back.
Yeah, exactly. And I think you just reiterate that. I thought, I thought your comments that you said the first time were, were fantastic. I just.
And then ignored them.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to have the back be the front if, if it's lined with the stormwater control basins.
We, did they, did they not respond to comment sixteen? Jen, can you scroll? You scroll up a little bit more?
They, they referred to the comment for number ten.
Oh, good.
Which, okay, and if you go back up to ten, you'll see.
I feel like just referring to a list and saying responses to these are inadequate. We need to see.
Yeah, I would say, I would say most responses regarding the, the concerns about redevelopment adjacent to Mossfield Sanctuary are inadequate. It, it doesn't help us understand anything more than we understood before.
Do we even know if the plans for this in terms of the height, if they have them, or are they just kind of putting this out there at this point to see what they'll go through? Do they exist?
It, it's a design build project, so, while, while they have a kind of a footprint, they don't have anything more than that.
Okay.
They state that the exact population and, and height will be determined. Well, you know, how do we comment on something that we don't know how big it is?
How can you do an evaluation if you don't know how big it is? That's my point. I, to me, the evaluation is invalid because you don't have all the information considered as part of the evaluation.
I mean, I just, I think that this wording is just all politicking, and, you know, I don't intend for my kids to throw a temper tantrum at the supermarket either. It doesn't mean it's not gonna happen.
This is because the law, they, they decided that the, they couldn't get around making EIS, but they didn't have to make one that was responsive.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, not even conclude, like, not including even like twenty-five percent design plans or fifty percent design plans. I mean, just something that's committing to certain design decisions that we could, that we can look at. It's, it's.
And, and certainly we don't need to see the detailed design, but we need to see design criteria. What's the height? Where, how will the utilities, trash and other things be located on site? They do indicate that they're gonna have more dumpsters, but they very carefully say there won't be any more trash per student, ignoring the fact that there are three times as many students.
I think it's the monitoring and then also just getting out a, a commitment to maintaining, to fixing things when they go astray.
Oh, Yukon's good at that.
I mean, there, there's a real question here, which is, I, I don't know if we stayed it in our minutes, or, or, I mean, how, how do we adequately review and comment on the project without having a set of somewhat, you know, some sort of set of plans?
But, but Michael, beyond that, the evaluation itself cannot be effective without that information. You cannot do, you can't evaluate a building unless you know, and its impact, unless you know how high it's going to be. I mean, or, um, you know, I did, the evaluation itself is compromised, not, it, it isn't just us. It's the evaluation process that's compromised here.
And I, I think one of the things that they're trying to hide behind is by saying it's, they're maintaining the existing use of the site for student housing.
Yeah.
Without really acknowledging that overall, it's not the existing use, it's a three and a half fold increase in the density of the use. And that brings with it a lot of changes from the existing use that need to be explicitly evaluated.
That's an interesting idea, that it's existing use in one respect, but really it's, it's tripling the existing use is really what's happening.
Well, it's a matter of scale, not type.
Yeah, and, but scale, the scale, this, this order of magnitude change shouldn't be maintaining the existing use. It should be identified as the preferred alternative, which is to increase the density.
Yeah, yeah. And, and just to follow up on what Vicki said a minute ago, I mean, it's not only is, how can we review it? How can this EIE be comprehensive? How even can, how can DEP, how can DEP adequately?
Right.
Review this project without having at least more information in, in a narrative form, if not actual plans to, to, um, cause, you know, they're the final arbiter of this whole thing. How, how can they do a proper evaluation either?
Well, because they're referring to the deep guidelines and, and guidances, they could get by with deep.
I know, but it is, it is inadequate, even though it complies, it's, uh, there's a lot of detail that we don't have.
There should at least be conceptual plans.
Yeah.
EIE for Mirror Lake have conceptual plans?
They were more, more conceptual than this.
Yeah, they were, they had, they had a lot of renderings in there to just visualize what it was gonna look like one day.
Like, yeah, the aesthetic improvements, the landscaping, you know, where those, they're gonna be doing the de-watering.
But the point is it was something more, something that you could get your arms around more, and that's not what we see here. So if they can do it from Mirror Lake, they ought to be able to do it for this.
I, I'm, I'm sure they have it in some draft form, or if they're already this far along, I'm sure.
In terms of the, I, I think the Board of Trustees saw a presentation, but I don't know who, who can share that, but I, I do believe they have.
Yeah.
I don't, so, know if they're public.
Is that FOIA, is it FOIABLE?
Yeah, but yeah, I would think you wouldn't have to FOIA it. I would think you would just ask Yukon to share that. And if they don't, then you can FOIA it. You could do a FOIA request. I, I, having been the, having been FOIA'd before, I'd rather someone just call me up and say, can I please have a copy of that? They'll send it to you as a PDF for free.
Well, then why, why, why can't we just ask for?
Yeah, exactly. We can do that.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Well, they did have, one thing when they, well, they didn't really say it. On their scoping meeting, they did mention five-story apartments, but they didn't have any renderings or anything.
Right. Five to seven stories, actually.
Yeah, the five to seven.
Yeah, that's the.
But that's the only place where it's mentioned.
Yeah. So how, somehow they're getting nine hundred students into those four polygons that are on the.
Oh, three.
Oh, three, yeah.
What page is the, the, the graphic?
The graphic is on page thirty of the online version.
Thank you.
Wait, the little one, what, that little building? Oh, wait.
Were they really strange, strangely shaped?
Do you want me to pull that up, or do you want me to stay, stay here?
To the page thirty graphic? Um, all right, well, are we done with the comments? Is this the end of them? Number sixteen? I just wanted to make sure we're.
No, it goes down to, and then they talk, no, there's like twenty, yeah, twenty-two, cause including the town council, which.
Well, what, what would folks like to do? Would you like to continue through this table or look at the, that kind of simplified proposed conditions graphic and discuss that?
I'm, I might suggest you just kind of go through the, this table, because you're almost there, and then you could kind of do an overview of that, of the graphic.
I, I agree.
Yeah, that was my sense too. Okay. Okay, so, uh, we're on, I think, number sixteen, which is, uh, something about that's about increase in parking area will exacerbate runoff, increased population will adversely affect existing trails. Did they have a comment? Did they respond to this comment in the previous page?
They, they referred us to comment ten.
Ten.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. That's not helpful.
This is, this is, this is the comment that Vicki rose, raised earlier, where
Yeah.
we need the baseline and we need a monitoring.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that's another monitoring program, is once we have a baseline for the Moss Sanctuary condition, we need it monitored.
Yep.
I mean, noted for EIE and design development just says, uh, you know, we, we read this, and that's really all it's saying. So I don't think that they are gonna, and it's.
So ridiculous.
I think in the vernacular, it's, yeah, you bet.
We heard you. Okay, the post of, and this is eighteen, the post-development sanctuary access should be carefully designed rather than an afterthought. Uh, yeah, we've, I think we've talked about this already.
Right.
Okay.
Um, one thing we do need to talk about is access during construction. Essentially, they're saying there will be no access during construction, and the only access would be the trailhead on Birchwood Heights Road. I think something needs to be done here so that there is access from South Eagleville Road. Essentially, you, if, if they close it, they are closing it off to anyone who wishes to approach it from the north, which includes E O Smith High School, which does field trips there, uh, university groups that do trips there, anyone living north of it. I mean, essentially, because they cannot walk down one ninety-five to the entrance on Birchwood Heights. The sidewalk does not extend that far.
So their response to comment fourteen, i- it's confusing, they, their wording is, the town has agreed to a temporary access to Moss Sanctuary.
We have not.
I don't, but.
We have not.
They're the ones that need to create the temporary access, not us, right?
Right, so, and, and we are, that's incorrect. We are talking with them about figuring out a way that is not super dangerous to, and I've talked to Robert Corbett about this, and they're open to suggestions, so, but I think it should be noted that we need, we are, we would, we really need to find a way to access this during construction.
Yes, what I would like to have in the records is that PNRC is requesting a field trip
Yes.
with a representative of Yukon to look at the options for an alternative access from South Eagleville Road during construction.
Yeah, um, as you well know, I'm pretty familiar with getting from one ninety-five into, into Moss Sanctuary, and it would be fairly difficult unless one is willing to do some, what, well, not major construction, but from a trail maintenance perspective, it would be a lot of work to set it up. You know, usually I think a trail work is being with hand tools and stuff, and the only feasible route might require more than that.
Yeah, I, um, I, so we, we were supposed to, um, we were supposed to talk about that with PNRC, so I think, um, that, and you looked at that, Jim, right? You went out there and you don't, it's not, I, my sense was, just from kind of walking down there, it doesn't look super accessible. So.
Yeah, you have to do some major side hill work.
Yeah.
Et cetera, or construct at least two bridges.
Yeah.
Now, I have a question on access as well. Other, do we have very many emergency responses that need to extricate people from Moss Sanctuary, and how is that done now?
And we have.
Possible.
Right now, we have, um, there's that old woods road, and there's bollards, and the fire department has keys to that bollard so they can get emergency equipment in there, but there will have to be the continued way to access the interior of the sanctuary.
And I think that university needs to understand that, or they will just put up their construction fence across that.
Right.
Uh, anyway, I think the next step is a field trip with someone from Yukon to have a, on, you know, on the ground discussion about this.
Yeah, I mean, the, all these comments are, are, it's, there's like a list here of just things the EIE did not address, right? You kind of brought that up, right, Vicki? Like, there's, there's just the, the aesthetics, the proximity of infrastructure and facilities and all this stuff. There's the temporary access, there's the new permanent access. I mean, there's just, there's, there's a whole bunch of stuff that just, they're kind of punting and saying, yeah, yeah, we'll continue to work with the town, or it's been noted, but um, it, it, it should have been, it should have been at least addressed in some detail, uh, in the EIE for people to, to at least.
Right, and supposedly demolition starts January, in early January.
Yeah.
That's three months from now.
Yeah.
And, or two months from now, actually. So I think something needs to be done soon uh, in terms of going out there with somebody.
Yeah.
Is this, is this still considered a draft EIE?
No.
The finalized?
It's the, it, yeah, it, it's, yes, and we're, we're, the way it works is that we provide comments to, I believe it's to OPM, and they get incorporated in, into the record, and then there's a decision that gets made.
There's usually a, a, a appendix added with the comments and the response to comments.
Yeah, and that's what, the response to the con, the, the appendix is to the scoping, the ones that we're going over. That's an appendix, right, Ken?
Yes.
Yeah.
But there'll be, and the, one that, after we provide comments on the, the published document, that's incorporated as another appendix.
Right, yeah.
And they have another chance to be non-responsive.
And then, then OPM has record of decision, I think.
Yeah.
Jen, can you scroll us down to, uh, the next page?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so this is still, okay, um, twenty-one is a traffic study from, uh, okay, so we kind of discussed that earlier with traffic.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, and then what's? Okay? Okay. Number two. So the EIE should include an evaluation of mitigation, blah, blah, blah. And they just say noted. I mean, I just, it's really, it's really interesting. I mean, what do they mean? They noted it for the EIA. That, what does that mean, Jennifer? They noted it for the EIE? I mean.
Well, that's because this is a response to your, to the comments that were submitted as part of the scoping.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So are we, are we potentially, have some of these things potentially been answered in the larger document and we're reviewing an older, where we're potentially commenting on things that have been addressed in the EIE?
I, I was looking at that and it's very vague what, what they do. What they're.
For EIE and we're looking at the EIE, this should be addressed in the EIE.
Yeah. Well, what, what, what we're doing is we're looking at our earlier comments.
Yes.
And the response is supposed to say how they've addressed it in the EIE. And what this response says noted for design development is essentially to me, that says they didn't address it at all in the EIE, but it will be in the design requirements, which we have not seen, so we can't say for sure in the design build project.
Yeah, I mean, I just searched the whole PDF for mitigation and it's, it's, I mean, it's in the document, but I wouldn't say that there's a real deep discussion of, there's some mitigation of like dust and things like that, but but not in the, not in the context of what the committee is talking about here.
I would say they kind of waved their hands probably adequately at that in terms of short-term impacts.
If you look at, if you look at, starting on page 14, that gives you the impact assessment summary. And there's a table there.
Yeah, it's a pretty long table.
Yes.
I mean, for instance, they say visual and aesthetic character. They say no mitigation is required, but the proposed action is consistent.
Right.
I mean, under potential impacts on page 17, not, well, never mind, it's back to traffic, but it's just, it's, it's absurd.
I think for national resources, basically they're saying because they're staying within the existing footprint, that there will be no.
Yeah. And there's no direct impacts to wetlands. So I'm sure they're happy about that.
Well, I think this goes back to Ken's comment. We could say, you know, while the project, the redevelopment is staying within the existing footprint, what, what is changing significantly is the scale of the use. So we're going from 270 residents to, you know, approximately 900. So the the, the footprint is the same, but the, the the density of use is going to triple more or less.
And how do we feel?
That is, that is a change in use. That's definitely a change in use.
How do you feel about a development on that one acre on that corner? Because that's also going to be, I mean, obviously you will, you will be going through, that will be part of the local development review process, but it's hard for me to kind of look at this in isolation from that, you know what I mean? At this point?
Yeah.
Seats are, isn't it?
Sorry?
Isn't that exactly where the intermittent stream and seats are located? Isn't that?
They're just, they're just down from that a little bit. There's three or four outfalls just below that.
Yeah.
Where exactly? I can't, I don't know where we're talking about on the map.
I'm gonna, now I'm gonna go to page 30, okay?
Well, page 30 will not have it.
No, but I can, I know the outline of it, then I can, and then it also has.
The outline is on page 25.
Right, thank you. Yeah.
But if we, if we could.
Five, and then we can go to 30.
Okay.
Well, this is 30. I can literally tell you where that outbuilding.
Okay.
If you.
Jennifer, you included, here it is. I was gonna say you included it in your package.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Erin, I think you were, you were correct in saying those things are within that parcel.
They are there.
It's hard to tell because they don't, there's no map that has.
Yeah, but she just did a quick change from one to the other and it's certainly almost where that black arrow comes in, which is where I think they had.
No, it's actually south. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go now to.
Yeah, go, go to the other one, Jennifer, because I can, I marked it on my version of it, the one on page 30. Yeah, and we scroll down. Okay, the parcel intersects the top of that wetland.
Yeah.
And sort of where the notch is, that's about where the south edge of the town, the seeded property or whatever. That's, so it has a small amount of wetlands on it. And the drainage from coming in from 195 is also on it.
Yeah.
But the, but it kind of spills down and influences that whole area.
Yeah.
A lot more surface runoff than what is included in the quote wetlands there.
I would say we're only comfortable with that being developed if the stormwater is conveyed to whatever, you know, amazing detention system, treatment system they're going to have at the redevelopment site. We don't, we don't want that.
They're gonna have to do their own storm, I mean, and it may be in collaboration, but they will have to manage stormwater on that site. But just, I mean, I guess it's, so it is, it is, it's going to be a separate and distinct project. So I guess I, we shouldn't muddy the waters, but.
Why do you suppose that they decided to parcel off that one acre lot?
Because it has a wetland in it?
No, I, I think it's, you know, they're going to sell it to someone, so.
Right, it has, this has potential for commercial development.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you think about the width of it, it'd be pretty tight commercial development.
It's very tight, yeah.
Well, they, they did talk about, they talk about those seeding one acre to the town. And I could envision Yukon basically giving that acre to the town and sticking the town with the pump station.
And we just say no.
Where, where are you, where do you see that, Ken?
And one acre is probably big enough for a McDonald's.
I have to, just a second, I have, I don't have the PDF page number.
This is going to come out public, I think, pretty quickly, what this is. So just, it'll, it'll be on my story map.
What's that, Jen?
They're coming in for a pre-application, the, the folks who have the option on that.
PDF page 23.
I missed what, they have an option on that one acre?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seeded. Am I missing what seeded means? To me, it's like given to the town, but I think I'm, it's not.
Well, I think that's a question. What does that mean? Are they seeding the property, the land, or are they seeding the jurisdiction?
Yeah, I think it's the latter, but.
That's not what it says.
It would be good to get that clarified.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
And the real critical piece is what happens between that piece of property where all the outfalls are and the drainage and the wetlands that are along 195.
What happens? I don't know, because I don't know what the exact development plan, but they're going to have to deal with that.
Yeah. See, that's another wetland because the lay 195 was put in drains both behind my house and over towards schoolhouse brook.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the, the interest in just trying to squeeze something into that one acre, but I mean, that's just, it seems like it offers more buffer for the redevelopment area, you know, rather than squeezing it, drive-through or something like that. I don't, I don't get it.
Money, Michael, money.
Oh, okay. Oh, now I get it. Thanks.
All right.
Oh, um, what are we, what are we, where are we at? What are we doing? We got through our table, right? I think we got through our table. So any, any comments? Jen, maybe you could just zoom out a little bit so we can see the full parcel?
Well, look at the buildings.
Yeah.
Look at the building.
Yeah. So we have these, the orange ones are residential buildings, if I understand the, the legend correctly.
It's so much more.
Seven stories tall.
Yeah, that, that doesn't seem right.
Well, also, the, the older buildings were 15 separate buildings. They were kind of scattered out nicely, you know, in the, in the area. And now it's just bulk because of the need for parking.
And the, and the other thing that on those buildings, most of them were down slope from South Eagleville and invisible.
Right.
What, can, can anybody tell me here what here is the, the proposed parking garage?
The proposed parking garage, my understanding is that it's west, like on that western.
Okay.
Way.
Near, near as I can understand, the, the large polygon next to the legend South Eagleville Road.
This right here?
Is a parking deck.
No, I think that.
No, it's on the, it's at the west end.
On the west.
Yeah, this is the parking area. Yeah, this is definitely a building.
Yeah, that's the, the orange are apartments, I remember.
Well, no, go to the west end. You can see there's a large polygon there.
Oh, right. This, I believe is a parking. So park, you can go into the parking garage here, you can exit here, and it looks like, I'm not sure what they're doing here, but it looks like you're going to be able to exit again here, which doesn't seem.
It says that they will take, they're going to remove 20,000 square feet of vegetation to, on the west to clear the way for a new ingress route and parking.
Yeah.
But then they claim same footprint in other places for the buildings, so.
It's interesting. They're, they're, they're taking the same ring road, but they're, they're scooching it, you know, like 100 feet southwest for some.
Well, oh, right here, on the corner, they're aligning that with the, with the town hall entrance, and that's for a traffic, that's a traffic improvement.
So is there, is there going to be a signal light there or something, or?
I'm not sure.
No, they indicated it's going to be a right turn only lane.
Yeah.
And no entrance.
And right now it's one way. This ring road is one way.
Okay.
I don't know if you can take a left, though. I think you can take a left, actually, but.
Well, it doesn't make any difference if it says right turn only. I've watched people take a left out of dog lane, and I've watched people take a left out of the stop and the price chopper lot.
Oh, yeah, all the time. I think that, for me, this just highlights the proximity of wetlands and the need for them to create some sort of monitoring program. And it's distressing, or it's, it's, I mean, there's, there's nothing to show what stormwater is going to do on the site. So it's, you know, that's.
Yeah, and this is, this is Will chiming in. I haven't said much tonight, sorry about that, but if you do look at that map, the, in the, in the western, the southwestern portion, where the, there is a new road that's proposed, where they're shifting that road a little bit to the south and to the west, that, that pushes it, if you look at, at the, the topographic map, like essentially on the wetland. It's, it's not clear from this plan that, that, that there are, there could be like five feet from the wetland.
You mean, they here, where I, can you see my cursor?
No, no, go further west.
Go west.
They're, they're shifting that road, they're shifting the main road south, because you can see it shaded in the back of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you look at, if you look at the, the topographic map, which is not here, I mean, it's going to go right next to the wetland. Now, that may be because this is just an approximation, and it's not the final plan, but that's an example of how, you know, this uncertainty that we've been talking about.
And they are saying that this was delineated in the field, I presume, so this should be a more accurate location of wetlands than, you know, state mapping or something like that. So it, it, it should be accurate, but I, I see that too, that they're kind of pushing everything even closer because they're, they're shifting that other, that other egress to line up with the town hall entrance.
Well, also, what is the road doing actually on the project parcel edge? With no setback?
Are they subject to setbacks, Jennifer?
Nope, not from us.
Is the whole reason to shift it southwest like that, Jennifer, to, just to get that lineup with town hall, with the municipal complex entrance?
No, it's so that in the future, if Bolton Road, if Bolton Road extension were to, Bolton Road extension is due to come right, with a line right there.
Yeah, but I think it's more than that. If they can have Bolton Road extension and they can have a commercial parcel on the corner, it's win-win. For them. Lose, lose for us.
Any other comments? I don't, I don't, I can't, I don't personally have any at the moment.
No. Covered.
I've, I've got a few relatively minor ones that may or may not actually be within the conservation commission's purview. PDF page 76, they, they acknowledged they did not do a full parking analysis. And the question is, why not? And I think their, their answer is because we can make them park elsewhere on campus. And I think that's disingenuous.
That's ridiculous. Yeah, it doesn't. Yeah, that's what it says.
And on PDF page 62, they indicate that the closest hospital is Natchog Hospital, which I don't think I'd want to go there for an injury. That just, that just to me tells me there's a lack of attention to detail in this whole EIS. And another example of that is way back in the beginning on PDF page 33, where there's a reference to analysis relative to the hockey arena.
Okay, can you remind me?
PDF 33.
Which, which row? Ken?
The second entry, Public Health and Safety, first bullet.
Yeah.
I guess we're going to get a hockey arena out of this too. And so that's, we're getting a little bit of everything. I guess we're gonna get a hockey arena out of this too. And so that's, wow, we're getting a little bit of everything.
There, there's a little lack of attention to detail in the little things, let alone the big things that we've identified already.
Would you like that to be in our minutes or commissioners in the conservation? Should we be including some, a general list of some errors as an example of, uh, our concerns about attention to detail?
That I don't know.
No, I don't. I mean, you can, but that's up to you.
I'll, I'll make it as a private citizen.
Okay, that, that would, that'd be valid for them to get that just to, you know, maybe that ups the level of scrutiny when they see that there's been, you know, kind of some, some, I mean, things get missed sometimes, but
Yeah.
leaving hockey arena in there is kind of bad.
I had a concept that I think we might want to push. They mentioned, they mentioned an emergency generator, diesel generator, but they also mentioned, uh, hydrogen fuel cells.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I wonder whether this would be a place where a fuel cell based microgrid that covered the critical town infrastructure for sustainability. Uh, what could be combined with this and really become an example of a, of a sustainable microgrid that addressed emergency conditions.
You should talk to, um, do we have a, uh, Jennifer, is Peter Millman on our, any committees in town? Do you know?
I don't believe he is anymore.
But this is, this is, this is an example to, to, to do a demonstration project that, that could could be the wave of the future. But it would require working between the town and the, possibly the high school and Yukon to, and, and ever source to create a microgrid for that little public area there. But I don't see where on the site that the fuel cells will be placed.
Well, 500 kilowatt fuel cell could fit in a shed, so they could probably fit it almost anywhere. But, uh, I, I like that idea. I'm not sure. Uh, not sure they'll do it or make space for it, but I think it's a cool idea.
I have a question about where we go from here. Who will be receiving these comments? Uh, will it be Yukon? The contractor who wrote the EIE, um, or is this going to be like the previous comments that were passed on to PCC? And then incorporated in a PCC comment?
It will pass on to PCC incorporated, um, into the PCC comments, like the scoping, just, just like the scoping notice, your minutes will be attached. And then the town will send one unified. Um, usually the planning and zoning commission is the one that really does the heavy lifting here and the town council. They will look at the planning and zoning commission's comments with all the attachments. And then they will, usually they concur, but they, um, in the last one, they added one more thing about the Bolton Road extension. So, um, but it will go out as one unified comment to Yukon. And there's a contact there, like someone from there.
And the way this usually works is it goes to Yukon and they, they pass it on to their contractor to prepare the response. And then Yukon sanitizes it.
Right. Um, so, but I'm thinking that if we're going to do a field trip about a possible trail relocation, uh, that needs to be pursued now. To wait for this whole, you know, incorporation into PCC and comments back and forth, uh, it will be too late.
So because of the timeframe for PCC, I have to do my whole memo for them, uh, for their meeting to discuss this on Wednesday. Um, so is there a way, and I think they'll be very much in favor of including, including that. Um, but is there a way to be specific without being exact and then get out there with Robert Corbett, who has offered to do that?
Yeah.
We can kind of figure that out.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can't pull something off before Wednesday.
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine. I just mean, let's not wait a, a month or two.
No.
This whole bureaucracy to move forward.
No.
I think we need to do it before the close of the comment period in mid-November to have any comments we have submitted.
Well, actually, no, I mean, not PCC, because of the meeting schedule, they, they're gonna be drafting all of their comments um, by on, and, and on November 2nd, because all of the comments are due on, on November 18th. And so the town council will be reviewing that on November 14th at their meeting. So if, what I'm suggesting is perhaps saying that, that there really, really needs to be an access to the mosque sanctuary for, for all of the reasons you cited and also for emergency access. Um, and that you, if you could be, if you could be very general so that we're, we have it on the record without, I don't know that we, how the timing will work for me to be able to incorporate that into, to get PCC to incorporate that for Wednesday. Do you know what I mean?
Well, if we can be general enough that it's imperative that there be some access from the north.
Yeah.
Then the university will, uh, looking for the language here. Will continue to collaborate with the town on potential impacts. That's what they'll tell us.
Can, can it be said that the?
Collaboration.
Sorry, Ken. Could, could we say generally that, uh, uh, the PNRC and Conservation Commission are, are looking to have a, a sit walk with a Yukon representative before the comment period closes? Can we be that generic, general, but specific at the same?
Well, let, let me just back up for a minute. So what are you trying to get uh, in the comments? Isn't it just that you, you feel that it's imperative? Because of the, the use, the pedestrian use, this, you know, the research use, the E O Smith, the, all of the fitness use of the mosque sanctuary, that there be, um, an entrance on the northerly side during construction? So can you say, I think if you just say that without designing it for them, then, then, because I think, I'm not sure what else you're gonna get from them from a field trip, but I do think, and a field trip has to happen, but I think they're kind of two separate and distinct things. I, I think you want to get that on the record very strongly and then we roll up our sleeves and do the work.
Okay, I think that field trip should be, um, specific to finding an agreeable access route to, from the north in the mosque sanctuary.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the other thing that the comments need to explicitly include is that the town has not agreed to a temporary access to the mosque sanctuary during construction, because they stayed in a couple of places that we have agreed to an access.
Yeah, you know, Jim, when you're, when you're out there, because I know you're out there a lot, I think maybe is there a way to, to access it through that out parcel E?
Um, well.
I mean, like from the South Eagleville side, not from 195.
It would, well, from the sidewalk, it would require two bridges and.
Oh, that's on 195.
From 195, um, and if you come in from the, um, if, if you come in from that parcel E, it would require pretty extensive side hill work or walking along the side of the pavement. Um, if you, if you go down 195 from the South Eagleville intersection, there is a driveway that comes down the hill very steeply. That is Hank's Hill Road before it was rerouted. Um, and it continues across 195 and you can see the traces of it. And I don't know where it becomes south.
I think the best probably we're gonna get is to, I'm just based on what I know of that site and what Jim is telling me about the site and is, and I think for this EIE, you're, I think you need to state on the record if that's what you want, that, that it's imperative. I, I think there's gonna be a lot of rolling up our sleeves and trying to figure out how this is gonna work. And it may be that, you know, during one phase of construction, we're accessing it from one point, from another point, I, I think it's gonna have to be fluid. I, I just don't know how else that's gonna happen.
That's okay. The other complication is if someone is buying that cor, you know, releasing that corner lot, uh, that's going to impact the access from either South Eagleville Road or 195. In other words, that narrows the options because they would not want foot traffic through a development for whatever, a McDonald's or whatever's gonna be there. So we have to keep that in mind. Um, looking at options. But I, I just think the most efficient thing to do at this point is to go out there with somebody from Yukon who knows something about how this is all gonna work construction wise.
Yep.
To, to have the reality of what is actually going to be possible.
Yeah, 100% that has to happen. I just think we need to get the, I think it, I think they're two separate things.
They are. They are two separate things. Yeah.
All right, Chad. How are you doing?
He's at the building.
I'm still here. Um.
Yeah.
You know, it's obviously a lot to take in here, but, um, I've, I've tried to capture everybody's comments as best I can. Um, I'm, I'm gonna need some time to clean it up though. Um, uh, Jen, and I'm, and I'm, I know that there's a, there's a timeline under which I need to submit these things. So what, what is that timeline?
Could you get me something? Oh, what's your time? When, when could, Monday?
I, I've, I've been in meetings since eight this morning, so I'm about out of gas. So it's not gonna happen tonight, but it can happen tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Yeah.
Or Friday, but.
Tomorrow or Friday would be fantastic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Wh- while we've been talking, I've been playing in Google. The Yukon Board of Trustees packet for um, September 29th of last year. Mantle apartment existing 240 bed apartment complex, skipping a lot of lines. Um, the, the new, developing a new apartment style complex on the Mantle apartment site in the range of 800 to 850 apartments.
Jim, was that of 21 or 22?
21.
Okay.
I'll send the link out.
They, they, they've since, they just, they just sent this.
Yeah, but I, but the the jump between beds and apartments.
But if it was 2021, was that an earlier, more ambitious idea that?
This is what the board of trust, this is what the board of trustees approved.
When?
Uh, on the 20, the September 29, 2021 meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Although I thought I saw that most of them are proposed as one bedroom.
Okay.
Yeah, you know.
Well, we just, we just don't have any details really, or not many.
Well, my, my, my point is the details are even vaguer after I found what the board.
That I, Jim, they, they just went to the board of trustees, um, like a few, either, it was either August or, or September. And they, and they, they moved, I think they approved funding or something for this, so.
Yeah, $850,000.
That, that's for the, um, just the probably preliminary investigation because
Yeah.
it's gonna be about
Yeah.
way more than that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Chad, thank you for keeping track of the conversation and.
Yeah, thank you, Chad.
That's, uh, it's not an easy task to do it in live time, so I wouldn't do it. I couldn't do it.
I don't think any of us can do it.
Thank you. Um, and it's really great, uh, seeing my old, uh, PNRC folks and meeting with you. That's been fun. So great to see you all. And it's been a really good conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully, hopefully it bears some fruit.
Okay, good. Michael, while I have most of your commission here, um, keep in mind that all the Miranda is on both committees. Um, or committee and commission. Um, Quentin, uh, is a representative um, from the commission. So I kind of encourage you to see if somebody else is willing to take that role.
Uh, yeah, we haven't talked about it, but I've been assuming it would be Miranda, but we
I, yeah.
We'll definitely talk about it.
Oh, we were hoping for another person as good as she is.
Oh, you want to steal all of our members? Okay, we can, we can discuss that too.
Yeah. That's not a topic for tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
My brain's fried.
Yeah.
A link in the chat that you will like.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate that.
But it.
It's, uh, new Yukon apartments to include modern amenities and clean energy written today, written today. Yeah.
Yeah, this is what I saw before.
Cool.
Okay, I just, I just shared in the chat what I was looking at.
So the, the rendering on the first page of that is a seven story building.
And that's what it says, view of the mosque sanctuary trailhead looking north.
What?
Looking north?
Oh, from the trailhead?
Yep.
That's ridiculous. Yeah, okay. Jen, what's the, um, or do you know about the?
Jennifer, could you, um, Jennifer, could you forward that link to us?
Yes.
To, tomorrow, you know, there's no hurry, but so we could take a look at it. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to, I, I think the, the schedule of like sort of public input is on that general website, right? If
Yeah.
Uh, for general public to input. Okay.
It's, um, you have to, um, all comments have to be received by, uh, uh, November 18th. And so because of the way, all, that's why I had this special meeting right away, because I needed that planning and zoning is gonna comment on Wednesday and then town council on the 14th.
Right. Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Or do we have a motion to adjourn rather? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Unless we have anything else to discuss.
Second.
Thank you for seconding, Miranda. Um, it really is great talking with all of you about these issues that we're all concerned about and trying to get it to a better place. So I, I don't know how hopeful I am that it has any measurable change, but it is, it is good talking it through with you all, so.
James, I have, before we go, um, James, I just want to make sure you're, can you confirm that you're getting my emails?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. All right. Thanks, Paul.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Well.